All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Work Session for Wednesday, May 26, 2021. It is 2:00. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. We have Commissioner Carolyn Mahia to my right. I believe Commissioner Edwards will be joining virtually shortly. We have the county manager here in front of me, Ramiro Chavez, and Public Information Officer Megan Porter. Through our Zoom, today's topic is the Noxious Weed Control Board, and it's slated for an hour. The public can follow along through our county YouTube channel by livestream, or through a conference line at 360-252-9020, and the PIN is 1234. I see Tim Wilson from our Public Works Department, and he's got some guests that I'll let him introduce at the appropriate time. And I'll turn this to the county manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon to all of you. Commissioners, this is an informational briefing. Where Tim Wilson is going to be introducing members of the Noxious Weed Board, and is going to walk you through all, I believe, as a group, see what the mission is, what are the activities the Noxious Weed Board does, and I believe what the value added they bring to the community of Thurston County. So, Tim?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good afternoon, Ramiro. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager for Public Works. I have a, lucky enough to have a couple of our board members here with us today. Looks like three board members here today, who I will introduce here in a few moments. Just wanted to frame it up and say that staff has provided these briefings at times in the past, but this is the first opportunity to have the Weed Board interface with the Board of County Commissioners. We're very excited for that, and hopefully this will be the first of annual briefings back to the Board on the Noxious Weed Program.
Hey, Tim. Just for the record, Commissioner, it was, has just joined us, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Edwards.
Afternoon, Jim. They just let me in. It wasn't that I just joined. They just let me in.
Okay. So before we go into introductions, I just wanted to give the outline of the structure of the local Noxious Weed Board. And so the rules that govern formation and operation of the local Noxious Weed Board are via state statute, via RCW 1710. There, on county weed boards, there are five voting, and one non-voting member, which is typically the county extension agent. Currently, we have four of our positions filled, and one position that has been vacant for some time, and we have actively tried to recruit for that position, and that effort is ongoing. The Noxious Weed Board is responsible for carrying out the state mandated provisions of the Washington State Noxious Weed Law, again, RCW 1710. And just as a, for information, Noxious Weed Law is very old. It actually predates statehood, so it's been around for a very long time, and first arose, if you will, as a mechanism for, to hold, for private property owners to hold county government accountable for noxious weeds that were spread via county right-of-way way back in the day. Procedurally, the local weed board must adopt the state noxious weed list. So similar to the local weed board, there is a state noxious weed board that is affiliated with the Department of Agriculture that adopts a noxious weed list each year. The county, by statute, must adopt that list, and has the authority to also add noxious weeds of local concern to that weed list. From there, the Weed Board oversees a program that typically includes inspection, education, technical assistance to our property owners, violations if it comes to that, and mandatory control of the noxious weed species. The Weed Board formation is a little bit odd, in that by statute, anybody who wants to serve on the Noxious Weed Board needs to go out in the community and get the signature of 10 registered voters within their district, which sometimes is a lift for the candidates to do that. They must then bring that back to the Weed Board, the Weed Board acts at one of their Weed Board meetings, and makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. The Weed Board, or the County Commission then considers those recommendations, and appoints board members for a four-year term. Goodness. All of our Weed Board members are either farmers or working individuals. By statute, I should say, four out of the five Weed Board members need to be involved in agriculture. All of our board members are working adults that have agreed to volunteer their time to serve the residents of our community, and we certainly appreciate that. And with that, I would ask the board members to introduce themselves, maybe in the order of the PowerPoint that I'm about to share. Are you seeing that?
Yes.
Okay, so, let me see if I can. For some reason, I'm having a hard time forwarding the slides, so bear with me. Oh, okay. I think we're in the right spot. Carol, would you like to go first?
Sure. So, hi, my name's Carol Peening. I'm District, the District One representative, which, as you can see, is sort of the northwestern corner of the county. I'm the longest-serving member on the Weed Board, which is really weird to say, because when I joined the Weed Board about six years ago, I was far, far junior. There had been several longstanding members who had 30 or more years of experience. It seems to be a job that people, volunteer position, that people enjoy and stick with for a long time, and they all of them aged out at about the same time. So, I stand on the shoulders of giants. I came to the position mostly because in my day job, I worked for the Department of Natural Resources, and one of the things that I've been doing there is trying to figure out how to manage noxious weeds on state-owned aquatic land. And so I was pretty fascinated with how my home county does that as well. So, like I said, I've been on the Weed Board for about six years, and I think they elected me Chair mostly because I was the person with the longest track record, heaven help us. That's me.
Let's go. Hi, my name's David Mills, representing District Two, which is down in the southwest corner. Been the least amount of time on the Board just for the past two years. Got into it, my wife and I have raised cattle, pigs, horses. We raise hay for sale, and spent a lot of time in the summertime picking tansy and other weeds. And so when I was asked to join the Board, it seemed like a great thing to do. And that's why I'm here.
Paul is not with us today. My name is Fran Sands, and I live in District Five. I live up on Weir Prairie. I'm a small rural landowner, very similar to David. I consider myself a grass farmer, so growing, you know, hay for livestock, growing grass, and become very concerned as I moved to Rainier with weeds and their impact on livestock. And so this seemed like a good fit to volunteer. I've been on the Board for four years, up for, planning on reapplying for the next four-year term. So I'm happy to be of service, and happy to focus on a topic that's really important to me.
Okay, thank you. So I also wanted to mention the Noxious Weed Program staff, some of which the Commissioners have met, some of which you have not. We have three full-time employees who are exclusive to the Noxious Weed Program. Mike Murphy and Mary Jo Siri are both Noxious Weed Specialist Twos, and Heidi Steinbach, who came to us late last year from Mason County, is our new Noxious Weed Specialist One. The three of those individuals are responsible for basically tracking all of the noxious weed infestations in the county. So they're very busy this time of year. We also have Paula Cracknell, who is our Aquatic Resource Specialist. The, there has been a shift over the last four or five years in our staffing within the Noxious Weed Program, in an attempt to provide a little more consistency in our program and better service to the public. We've moved away from a staffing structure that in 2016 was three full-time staff and four seasonal inspectors. So we would hire for about five months out of the year, seasonal inspectors that would go out and do the inspections, interface with the public on weed issues. What we were finding is that there was some inconsistency from year to year. If, you can imagine, if a property owner had an ongoing noxious weed problem, and we were hiring seasonal inspectors year after year, they may be talking to a new individual each year, hard to establish a rapport, maybe some changes in messaging. So we saw that as a problem. We've been slowly shifting to our current staffing, which is our three regular staff plus our Aquatic Resource Specialist, which, who does some of our Noxious Weed Programs, and we're down to one seasonal staff for inspections. That's provided some reduction in cost as well, and again, it's providing that constant interface with the public. Let's see. Move this forward. So we wanted to talk a little bit just about why we have a Noxious Weed Program. First of all, I'd start with the definition of a noxious weed, and what a noxious weed is. In general, a noxious weed that can be harmful to the environment, humans or animals, they typically must have been introduced into an ecosystem by either ignorance, mismanagement, or accident. They're typically invasive or aggressive, and they lack their natural predators. So, and in most cases, that, those are insects or animals that were native to the region that these noxious weeds came from. And those weeds were picked up by any number of means and brought to a region where they typically haven't belonged. And in many cases, those natural predators won't come along with them. There was an economic impact on invasive species that was done by Washington State in 2017. The study evaluated the economic cost of 23 of over 200 invasive species present in Washington State. Of the species studied, many, many are those that are found in Thurston County. They include the NAPweed species, Purple Loose Strife, Invasive Knotweed, and Eurasian Watermilk Oil, which are all on our current Noxious Weed List.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are those weeds that you just mentioned, are they on the lakes, or are they wetland, or are they more on drier land? Where do you find those weeds that you mentioned before?
Yeah, three of the four that I mentioned are consistent with aquatic lands or lakes. So, Invasive Knotweed. Knotweed is one of the plants that we saw on the tour this morning, if you recall, the bamboo-looking plant.
Yeah.
Those typically grow close to water, although not exclusively in water. We will also find them sometimes in right-of-ways or on private properties as well. But they love water, and they spread very well hydraulically, like we talked about. So if they break off and float off to somewhere else, it'll take off. Eurasian Watermilk Oil, which we'll talk about a little more, is a submerged aquatic. A lot of impact to the lakes, a lot of impact to the river systems. And then Purple Loose Strife is a emerged aquatic. So you will see that growing up in marshes, wetlands, wet areas. And the NAPweed species are more prone to agricultural disturbed lands, dry lands.
Thank you.
So, getting back to the economic impact of noxious weeds. So, these are the costs, based on that 2017 study, the impacts in Washington State of invasive species. All told, in 2017, it was estimated at $1.3 billion annually to Washington State's economy. Recreation at $47.6 million, water facilities at just over $100 million, and those would include rivers, lakes, canals, those types of things. Livestock at $282 million, and that could include reduced pasture. So if you have a noxious weed coming in, and just reducing the amount of viable pasture that's available to livestock, or it could include toxicity to livestock, such as tansy redwort, we'll talk a little more about that later. The timber industry is affected to the tune of $297 million, and crops via decreased yields, lower-valued products is affected at about $589 million. And I should add that I don't think that this study considered the devaluation of private property values as well. So, the bottom line, nearly every property in Thurston County has the potential to be impacted by noxious weeds in some way, shape, or form, and the impact can be pretty significant. So just a quick touch on the laws and regulations regarding this. As I mentioned, RCW 1710, that is the law that is related to the authority of both the state and local weed boards. It talks about how they are formed, what their authority is. And then WAC 16750 is the provision that allows us to establish that Noxious Weed List. It is very specific in how we would progress down the enforcement avenue, and establishes monetary penalties when we issue violations. Noxious Weed laws are also in Thurston County Code, Chapter 17, and, whoa, I'm sorry. And that is a provision that limits the economic loss from noxious weed, and allows for noxious weed containment zones. So if you think of the northeast portion of the county, unincorporated Lacey out in Martin Way, is one example, we have a weed containment zone that is specific to one species, gorse, which is a very limited distribution in that area, but very prone to movement via soil disruption or development. So there is a containment zone out there that provides that anybody doing development out there would need to mitigate for the risks of that.
Tim, since you're on that topic, it's the Board. Who would start a Noxious Weed Containment Zone? Would that come before the Board of County Commissioners, or would your Weed Board be able to impose that, or somebody else?
The Weed Board would recommend that, and all of our current zones have been in place for some time, but those were established by the Board. Those would come in front of the Board of County Commissioners.
And are we limited to unincorporated Thurston County in those designations?
No, we're not.
Okay.
I should add that, that the Noxious Weed Law expands beyond just unincorporated Thurston County, and we have authority, or the Weed Board has authority within the city limits as well. And we work very closely with all of the cities on noxious weed control. So, the Noxious Weed lists themselves can seem very complex at first, but they, once you understand them, they're relatively straightforward. Three designations of noxious weeds, and again, the State Board establishes a Noxious Weed List, which is then prescribed out to the counties to some degree, and then we have some authority beyond that. The premise of noxious weed management in general, and establishing these lists, is that the highest priority is on new infestations of higher risk. So typically, to be a Class A noxious weed in Washington State, it needs to be high-risk. It needs to go through an assessment, and there needs to be some kind of quantification of the risk of that plant. And it also is typically a very limited distribution, or it doesn't quite yet exist. So if we think of, gosh, one you might be familiar with, Kudzu, which is a plant that was established by the Soil Conservation Service down in the South for a specific reason, but it is very, very invasive, and can cause significant issues. That was found a number of years ago in Oregon, and because of that, and because of the proximity, it was added to the state weed list as a Class A weed. So these are, the idea is to be looking for those weeds very early on, and to cut them off before they can get established. As you roll down the weed list to Class B noxious weeds, those are typically hazardous, and limited to certain regions of the state. So they may be somewhat established on the east side of the mountains, but they're not on the west side, or a very limited distribution on the west side, and again, pose that risk. So you would see those on the Class B weed list. Class C noxious weeds are typically more widespread in distribution, but still may pose a risk locally. So the local Weed Board has the authority to pick those up. They also have the authority to apply, to add those to the county weed list, but only to specific areas. So, Yellow Flag Iris, which we saw on the lake tours this morning, because of different rationale, those are, that is classified as a noxious weed, but only within certain areas of Thurston County where it poses the biggest risk, potential escape to a river system, or something similar to that. Okay, real quick on the funding of the Noxious Weed Boards. Thirty-eight of the 39 counties currently have an active Noxious Weed Control Board. Typically, in Washington State, they're funded through one of two ways, either a general fund, or a moderate special use assessment. Currently, there are 10 counties funded by the general fund, and 27 counties through an assessment. Thurston County was one of the early counties to go the route of an assessment. It was first established in 1981, so it's been a good number of years. Since then, the majority of the counties to establish good, sustainable funding have gone the route of assessment. One county is funded through other means, which, that is a contract-based funding. So that Board has chosen to contract out and do right-of-way vegetation management. Public Works funds them for that work, and they're able to be funded that way. Okay, so just a breakdown. Thurston County's Noxious Weed Assessment, again, it was established in 1981. The last iteration or adjustment of that assessment was done in 2015, and was Board-approved at that time. It establishes for a 44 cent per parcel, plus a little over, a little under 3 cent per acre assessment to forest lands. All other lands within the county are just a flat 440 per parcel, plus 40 cents per acre, up to five acres. Anything in excess of that is assessed at 15 cents per acre. There are some exemptions, some which were placed locally by the Board at that time, and some which are in statute. So in statute, the federal and tribal lands are exempt from Noxious Weed Law. They are typically very, you know, pretty good partners as far as noxious weed management, but they're exempt from us issuing them violations. They're also exempt from us assessing their lands. Okay, just a quick overview of some of the work that we do. On average, there have, over the last five years or so, there are typically about 5,100 sites that are identified as having noxious weeds on them. These change every year. Some, after three years of continuous inspection, and they're weed-free, we take them out of the system. We no longer inspect them until we get another report, or come across them again. Likewise, there are multiple sites that are added each year. So they average about 5,100 sites a year. In 2020, there were 4,766 sites that we were aware of and checked. We are currently seeing a, this short-term reduction, and it could be cyclical. Noxious weeds are known to be very cyclical, and can vary with trends. We also, there's also been a change in the Weed Board's philosophy over the last four or five years, that over the last four or five years that we're kind of tracking on and hoping that that might be part of it as well. We've moved from more of a violation-based program to more of a education and technical assistance program. And to quantify that, in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we were averaging about seven or eight violations per year. So issuing violations, issuing citations, charging the property owners to go on and control their noxious weeds. Now, through the changes in staffing, getting more consistent staffing, trying to focus on education. We have, over the last two years, done zero violations. And I'm thinking the year prior to that, there were zero violations as well, but I didn't go back and look at that. But we're hoping that the increase in education and technical assistance is paying off in actual reduction in inspection locations. So we provide hundreds of technical assistant visits on an annual basis, a lot of site visits, a lot of phone calls, educating property owners on weed identification, how to manage their noxious weed infestation, how to better manage their pastures to prevent noxious weed infestations, those types of things. We still maintain a very active right-of-way eradication program, right-of-way noxious weed program. The county has a little over a thousand miles of right-of-way. And we, through the road program, hire seasonal people that go out and specifically travel our right-of-ways and pull primarily tansy but other noxious weeds as well and just make sure that our own house is clean before we go out and try to influence private properties. We have a fairly robust noxious weed education program that is becoming more robust as we go on. Staff is fairly active in getting out to public events, festivals, the Thurston County Fair when they can. We also distribute brochures at farm stores and landscape supply stores and places that are prone to have property owners coming in and that may have noxious weeds or nurseries, plant nurseries, that when people are thinking plants and noxious weeds. So we try to get out in front of that with education. We have a couple of different landowner assistance programs. We have a free disposal program. You can see the poster on the PowerPoint. This is in association with the work. And we provide for free disposal of certain noxious weeds at the work. And that's paid for from the noxious weed assessment. So the landowners don't have to have that burden of disposing of those costs. We also provide hand tools, weed wrench, to property owners to go out and assist them with pulling Scotch broom or gorse or some of the woody species as well. Okay, so just to wrap up, I want to focus on three noxious weeds and just kind of give you an overview of what we're dealing with. There's about thirty-nine weeds that are on the county weed list. So this is just a very small portion of those. Tansy rigwort seems to be one that most people are at least somewhat familiar with. It's been a problem for a number of years. A vision kind of like you see in the upper photograph of the dead cattle. There was, you know, somewhat common back in the seventies and eighties when tansy was very, very prolific throughout the county. Obviously, it's toxic to livestock. It's typically a symptom of poor pasture management or overgrazing. If you have a pasture that should be supporting five cows and you have fifteen cows out there, then you are prone to noxious weeds because you just don't have that good grass cover. So again, staff is out there just trying to educate property owners on how to manage their property to prevent noxious weeds in the first place. But then, once they have them, to help them manage and bring those back under control. Tansy rigwort spreads easily. So if you have a property that this becomes established and becomes a problem, it's going to move up and down the roadways. It's going to blow over the fence. It's going to move via animals and livestock. So it's a real threat to adjacent properties once it becomes established. Okay, so Brazilian eladilla and paraffeather. The eladilla is, oh, I'm sorry. The Brazilian eladilla is a problem both in the lakes and in the river systems as well, kind of the back channels of the river. What you're seeing here in a couple of the pictures, so the eladilla, if you look at the boat, it's full of pulled eladilla. And then the photo down below that is actually eladilla in the Chehalis River system a number of years ago. And although that's showing on the surface, that is rooted to the bottom. So that biomass is all the way through the water column. It is a problem for fish habitat, recreation, flooding, just a whole host of issues once it becomes established in those river systems. We've had a longstanding partnership in the Chehalis River. And we have had staff out or contractors out snorkeling and removing that each year in the Chehalis River. When that project first started, there was actual diver dredging. So they're out there with a big barge and a dredge and scuba divers liberating this from the bottom, pulling it up. There were studies done at that time about dissolved oxygen degradation. And when it was at this level, it was not very good habitat for fish. The dissolved oxygen levels were low. Couple of years post removal in these areas, there was a marked improvement in dissolved oxygen. So as far as fish and other wildlife habitat, that's very important. Paraffeather is the upper slide. And then the larger slide to my right, hopefully your right too. Again, a plant that is rooted to the bottom. But when it starts to grow, it looks like little Christmas trees on top of the waterway. It is on the noxious weed list, obviously. Again, with water quality degradation. Huge problem for fish passage, habitat issues, recreation. So we are controlling both of these on the Chehalis River. And we are controlling eladilla in the lakes, in Blue and Clear Lake. So those are two of our big aquatic ones. And oddly enough, you've probably heard this before, but typically, these types of noxious weeds were introduced by people who had aquariums and dumped into water bodies. They get established. And then you get the boats with boat motors in these areas. And by other means, they move from water body to water body quite easily. So if you are in eastern Washington or in some of our adjoining states, you will see check stations along the freeway often. And they are checking for these species as well as other invasives. Yeah, I see you, Carol. The last one we wanted to talk about was knotweed. And again, Commissioner Mejia, you saw this real briefly this morning on Long Lake. This is a real problem in some of our river systems and some of the local non-Thurston County rivers up on the Olympic Peninsula and other coastal rivers have really been impacted by this. And you think in Public Works, we do so much work for fish habitat and opening up new habitat for salmon. Knotweed is a long, long-range way that we can protect salmon habitat. Knotweed is an invasive that, it's an escaped ornamental. Once it gets established in a river system, it spreads very easily hydraulically. So any place, if you look at the upper right-hand picture, that is knotweed, all the way up and down that river channel. Once it's established, once it breaks off, even a small fragment of that via an animal walking through it, the beaver love it, human activity, or just the water itself, once that breaks off, wherever that lands, it's typically going to take off again and spread out from there. If you think salmon habitat for spawning, they need a lot of cold, clear water. The trees that are growing up along that creek are tall enough that they provide that shade to keep that water cool. Over time, if you get windfall or natural death of those trees and knotweed's established like that, the knotweed will quickly come in and get established where those trees would otherwise repopulate and regrow and provide that shade. So instead of a hundred or a hundred and forty feet of shade to those streams, you now have a monoculture where you're getting, you know, seven or eight feet. So it's really a problem. In the long term, a lot of these projects have been funded with Salmon Recovery Funding Board dollars and other salmon-related pools of money. We have been involved, we're lucky in Thurston County in that my predecessors got involved in this years ago. We have an active program on the Deschutes River. We were able to get in early, although there was, you know, a significant amount of knotweed. It was to the point where it was still controllable. We've been down the full course of that river several times and we are more or less in maintenance mode now. So the other thing about knotweed is, once it's there, it's very hard to control. It takes a number of years. So the crews go back, like the crew in the lower picture, with backpacks of aquatic, aquatically approved herbicide. And they're seeking this stuff out and treating it where they find it and try to keep it out of the Deschutes River. We're also doing the entire Deschutes watershed now. We're up and finding this in side channels and on private properties. Wherever we can find it, we're working with the property owners to get that control now. So that is the last of the examples. And I guess I would just ask first, do any of the Weed Board members have anything to add on any of the topics?
Yeah, this is Carol. I just really want to give a shout out to Tim. Part of, when I said what I, the reason I wanted to join the Weed Board was in large part because I know how limited funding is for noxious weeds and how widespread they are and how a little bit of work goes a long way if you can catch them early. And I just really, really want to give a big shout out to Tim and his staff for the hard work that they do and the fiscal responsibility they take for making sure that the, frankly, a little bit of money that they get goes a long way and is used really efficiently. So good job, Tim. You're the guy.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, can you stop sharing your screen so we can see folks?
Absolutely. Maybe. Let's see.
To piggyback on what Carol just said, I second that too. It's just impressive to see the hard work that Tim and his staff does and how they manage the budget they have to do with. That is one hard-working crew. We appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, great. Well, we've got about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen minutes for questions from the board. Commissioner Mejia?
I have no questions. Thank you, Tim. And thank you again for taking me out on Long Lake and teaching me about some of the weeds. It was good to see it in person, so I appreciate that.
Can I share words?
Yes, sir. Tim, how much money is brought in through that assessment on the properties? That tax assessment? What do you get a year out of that?
Yeah, I don't have the number in front of me. I want to say, Commissioner Edwards, the number is about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. There is, I should have mentioned earlier, we also have some great partners as well. DNR, Department of Ecology, and the State Department of Agriculture have all been very, very good partners in providing some funding, especially with our aquatic programs.
You mentioned about the knotweed and warming the water because it overtakes the area on both sides of the bank. Do we ever get any money from, say, Salmon Recovery folks or some of that salmon money to go in and deal with that problem?
Currently, that project is completely grant-funded, but it's funded through the Washington State Department of Agriculture that has a knotweed program and a knotweed bucket of money. They provide grants out to counties and other organizations on a competitive basis. So we've been able to fund this project through that program for now. And that's legislature-appropriated funds. So we really haven't had to compete for surfboard funding, although I know many of these projects in other counties are funded through surfboard dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Tim, your slide on page ten that talked about the inspection and technical assistance activities, I'm assuming that those activities are done by the staff members at the county?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, those inspections are done almost exclusively by the three staff members, Mike Murphy, Heidi Steinbach. Well, I should say the two of those because Mary Jo Siri provides plant identification and a lot of our reporting. So Mike Murphy and Heidi are our primary field staff doing those inspections in addition to the one seasonal inspector that we bring on annually. And his name is Mark Axtehl. And he's been a seasonal employee of Thurston County for something like sixteen or seventeen years now.
What I'm curious about is the Weed Board. Since we have the Weed Board here, what is it that you guys are engaged in at your meetings? Or what's on your work plan? How do you fit into the, you know, the activities that staff's doing? Maybe Carol is the chair. I'll ask you.
All right, so I'm going to say that we operate, I think of us as having sort of a dual role. The fact that four of the five board positions are slated to be people who are involved in primary agriculture makes sure that the Citizens Advisory Board are people who are, you know, citizens who are actually engaged in agriculture and who are affected by noxious weeds. So there's that sort of like, we're trying to represent those landowners who would rather not have noxious weeds show up on their property. That's one rule. Another is, and Tim can kind of go into the WACs and RCWs, but if it gets to the point where we need to get firm with somebody and assess a fine or take an action as government, then that doesn't just happen because of Tim and staff. We representative Weed Board members have to approve those sorts of actions. So we're both advocates and kind of judge and jury, I guess, when it comes to really taking an action on property if that needs to happen. We also, I think all of us are a little bit of weed nerds. So we learn about these plants. We advise or affirm staff recommendations about whether to add or remove a particular plant from the noxious weed list. And like I know in my case, because I work for DNR and I know who the weed people are at DNR, I've helped like make some connections between Tim and some funding sources at the Department of Natural Resources. So I think- advocacy and, and representation are really our roles.
Okay, good. Um, yeah, when you mentioned agriculture, I, that interested me just because you've got a lot of these invasive species that, that fall in, in water lakes and rivers, as, as Tim pointed out. And it seems like that's a, that feel, as a layperson that doesn't know anything about anything, that feels like a very different animal than, um, agricultural weeds on land, dry land. So I'm ju- and, and what I hear about most from the public is the water stuff. You know, what do you, how are you managing all this in the water? I don't hear much about the management practices on land. Maybe that's because we're doing such a great job, but, I guess it surprised me to learn that four of the five members have to have the agricultural connection because it seems like a lot of the work and a lot of the complexity is in the aquatic stuff, which wouldn't necessarily connect to agriculture at all, right?
You know, I'm going to disagree with that just because the waters, the way I think about it, the waters and the county roads kind of both serve as conduits for weeds. So, um, while, while you do hear people gritching a lot about, about the aquatic weeds, it's, it's, they can travel. That knotweed can wind up on someone's agricultural land. I think people see it coming from the water and it makes them nervous. But similarly, Paul Thompson, who's, who's not here, has a story of, um, some of his land backs up to a railroad and the railroad right-of-way was not being managed for tansy ragwort. And man spent a lot of time, money and effort to clean the tansy out of his property and here it came on the roads. So I think, I think some of what you're hearing is because people are head up about salmon and, and, and aquatic habitat, but also because stuff moves along rivers, just like it moves along roads.
Carol, I'd like to just add to that if I could, commissioners. Um, you know, those aquatic weeds, um, do spread. I live in a unique, um, prairie habitat on Upper Ware Prairie, yet, um, along the roadside is a huge infestation of knotweed in an area that you wouldn't necessarily associate with knotweed. Um, but it will have the ability until it's removed to, to spread from that location and cause, you know, further infestation. Um, so it, it's, might seem that it's mostly in the aquatic environment, but, um, driving around rural parts of the county, um, you know, I will see fields filled with tansy. I'm now seeing, um, knotweed along the side of the road and habitat that you wouldn't expect to see it. Um, and so from a, from my perspective, from an agricultural perspective, um, and the threat to livestock and the degradation of hayfields and forage, um, weeds are a continuous problem. Anxious weeds are in the county.
Looking at your Weed Board districts, I'm curious, um, maybe Tim, you know the answer. The, um, it looks like they're kind of divided up by, by surface area versus population. Is there a population component or is it just based, basically dividing up the, um, the square mileage of the county?
It's, uh, i- i- it's on geographic area and, and by statute, they are, uh, intended to be similar in size.
Got it. Okay. Uh, county manager?
Maybe a follow-up question to Commissioner Messer. Um, I think it will be good, uh, if you can walk us through the governance structure. Meaning we have, uh, five districts, geographic districts. We have, uh, vacancy on District Four. Could you walk us through how the board members are selected?
Well, uh, yes. So, so typically, uh, when there is a seated position, when there is a, an active, um, position, like the three positions that are here, those are four-year terms. So I believe in, they all expire in Ju- or, uh, October of whatever year they expire. Four-year terms and they're staggered. So, um, so they're not all expiring at the same time. When there is going to be, uh, a vacancy, the term is ending. We start to advertise in June. Uh, we'll do a public notice, uh, per statute, get that notification out there. Anyone interested can, uh, submit an application basically to the Weed Board with those ten signatures of registered voters. And, um, a- and then prior to October, the Weed Board would evaluate those. Uh, they would look at the, uh, the, the person who's, who is best suited to serve, uh, on that. And then the Weed Board would make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners for that. When there is a, uh, an open position as, uh, um, uh, Position Four is, right now, it's been open for a good number of time, we would bring forward any application, any applicant to the board and forego that window. Uh, so if we had an applicant, the Weed Board would consider that. And if they were well-suited, we would bring that right forward to the Board of County Commissioners. Does that answer your question?
On point. Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards, anything to follow up before we close?
Uh, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Tim, when you folks are utilizing chemicals, do you try to do your best to, I don't know, use the least amount, maybe apply early to get the job done before it goes to seed and those type of things?
Yeah, similar, similar to the lakes programs, we, we use an integrated, uh, weed management approach, which means, uh, we, we don't go straight to herbicides typically. If there's a way to control these manually, so if you think of our right-of-ways and our, you know, a thousand miles of right-of-way, that's all hand-pulling. That's not herbicide, uh, in most cases. Um, if we can, if we can do the job manually, if we can do it culturally, if we can, uh, teach the private landowner to, um, to better manage their field to control that versus just treating it with herbicide every year. We, we always go that route. We try to use herbicide as the least preferred alternative. Uh, when it does come to the point where, uh, we want to or need to use herbicides, we are bound by the same prescription policy as our, uh, integrated, uh, pest management strategy for lakes is. We have to have a prescription that goes through the Board of Health and is approved for those species. So when we're making re- recommendations to private property owners or using those herbicides ourselves, uh, we're using a prescription that's been approved by the Department of Health.
You know, just a, a quick follow-up, uh, railroads were mentioned earlier. And I know the county manager always tells me that the railroads are the big utility here. They've got a lot of juice, I guess. Anyway, uh, do you run into problems with railroads not maintaining their own right-of-ways properly?
We have at times, uh, had issues with not only the railroad, but, um, Department of Transportation at, at times. Any of these bigger con- conduits. However, I would say that we have a, a fairly good working relationship now with both the railroads and with, uh, with DOT, um, much better than, than many other counties. So we're very lucky in that regard.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good. Well, um, any final words from the Weed Board? We really appreciate you being here. I, I, when I don't hear about a board's activities very often, it usually means they're doing an awesome job. And that's kind of the case with you guys. I haven't heard much about you. No complaining, no, no discord. So it sounds like you work together well and we appreciate your service to the county.
Well, thanks for inviting us to talk to you today.
Yeah, hopefully every year we will be able to check in at a minimum.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bye, all.